All the meeting's so ordered today is Tuesday, April 8, 2025. This meeting is being video and audio recorded for future table broadcasts. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. Could I have a motion to open this meeting? We'll do a roll call.
Mr. Head?
Yes.
Mrs. Gold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fadera?
Yes.
And Mr. Habron?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, in whose law we believe, just as it is.
So the first item will be the school choice hearing. Could I have a motion to open this meeting?
Yeah.
Have you do a roll call?
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Habron?
Yes. Is there any?
I did send you a note on this, but basically I'm recommending, I'm going to be recommending against our school's participation for the next year in the school choice program. I feel as though it's too late at this point, and we'd like to actually work with our leadership team who's been working for two years and planning something more thorough. So we have a memo in the packet and we should be able to roll on that in a bit to time when we get there, but is there any discussion?
So could I have a motion to close the public hearing of the school choice?
Second.
We'll do a roll call.
Mr. Head?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Gold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fadera?
Yes.
And Mr. Habron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Next, we have proposed fiscal year 2025 school department budget. Hearing, could I have a motion to open the proposed fiscal year 20, I should say fiscal year 2026 school department budget?
Second.
We'll do a roll call.
Mr. Head?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Gold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fadera?
Yes.
And Mr. Habron?
Yes.
Okay. For the public, we did review this entire presentation during this whole committee meeting on March 19th. So anybody who wants more thorough information about our budget, you can certainly tune into the meeting on March 19th. But it is required by law that we have, we need to solicit public feedback on this, so we're going to review it again during this hearing. And as you know, these are our admission and vision statements. They both revolve around partnerships with all to promote student success and growth and aim, and the aim to be a higher performing school district. We are in the process right now of reviewing our strategic plan and writing a new one to begin the next school year. Our strategic objectives are achieving academic excellence for all students, creating thriving social and emotional learning experiences for all students, and strengthening partnerships with parents and the larger communities. So just as background, we wanted to discuss in general how our operating budget is funded each year. So accordingly, the key components are town appropriation, state aid, chapter 70 funding, federal and state grants. We also receive circuit breaker reimbursement and revolving funds and other sources. I would say the most important thing to focus on is that the town appropriation is approximately 57% of the school district's operating budget, and the chapter 70 funding is approximately 43%. And here's the table of our chapter 70 funding over the past seven years. And as you can see, the average 2.28% increase. This year is a 1.16% increase.
So a little more in depth on the last seven years of funding, chapter 70 in town. You can see that our chapter 70 increments have been more steady but minor. The amount that the town is required to fund our budget has also increased, you know, 5% versus the chapter 70 percent, eight of 1%. And then generally, it takes more than the required town contribution in chapter 70 to fund our budget, that there's an additional contribution that the town needs to make. That amount for the fiscal year 26 is about 5% more than they are required, which is still significantly lower than the past handful of years. All in all, our total operating budget that we're looking to request is 17.1 million, which represents a $753,209 increase, a 4.5 or a 4.59% increase, and the town share is representative of about 57%. Again, lower in the last three years than has been previously.
So there are shortcomings to building our budget. I will highlight a few of those. The town has averaged approximately $500,000 in revenue growth annually, based on budget to actual projections. And then over the last seven years, chapter 70 funding has averaged an increase in eight of 150, oh, just over $150,000, or 2.28% year over year. State and federal grants fluctuate year to year, but generally entitlement funds, ESSA or IDEA have remained relatively flat. And then high school tuition costs, of course, make up approximately 2.7 million or 15.75% of our operating budget. Okay, and I know you all have seen this in the past, but it's important to keep going over this to remind you that we continue to show that our budget is mostly made up of fixed costs. So we have salaries and wages. We have just over 137 full-time equivalent staff, union and otherwise people under contract, which accounts for 60% of our overall budget, or 2.65% increase of overall, 4.59% increase. Our technology, as you know, we're a one-to-one district, which means that we have a device for every student in the district, which allows equitable learning for all students. It also permits immersive learning, better engagement, et cetera. But with this comes fixed costs of maintaining a strong and safe technological infrastructure that can support our devices, our teachers, and our student needs. We have curriculum, which is the central guide for our educators as to what is essential for teaching and learning, so that every student has access to a rigorous academic experience. Without poor curriculum, teaching techniques would be disjointed and inconsistent from one classroom to another. We have special education, and out of the bunch, I would say this is the most volatile, unpredictable, and mandated cost to a district. On a per pupil basis, special education costs are at a minimum double that of a general education day student. So to provide equitable services to all students, a cushion in public schools must have funding for fixed and mandated costs, which support early identification, assessment-related, and social and emotional services, just to name a few. We also have transportation. Massachusetts schools, as you know, are legally mandated to provide transportation to students who reside more than two miles from the school. And the cost of transportation in the district is approximately 1.45 million, both for general and special education students, and increases regularly due to contractual obligations. And then we have high school tuitions. Because we don't maintain high school, we are, again, legally mandated to pay tuition for resident students attending high school. Traditionally, this expense is covered in the municipal budget. However, in a cushionet, we have the added challenge of carrying the expense in our school operating budget. High school tuition costs make up approximately 21% of our budget, and really, it's also unpredictable as students move in and out of the district. We also pay tuition for Bristol Aggie, Fairhaven High School, and New Bedford High School at this time. And then operations and maintenance. Maintaining and operating our facilities is costly. These schools were constructed over 50 years ago. Much of our major equipment is out of date and inefficient. So while we've worked very hard to mitigate the costs that we were able to, many of the costs related to those operations and maintenance are fixed and become significant budget busters.
In building our budget, we always approach the budget process by forming a baseline budget or providing the same level of services we did in the previous year and the next future year that we're planning. Accordingly, our projections lie within this chart. Personnel expenses to remain fixed and with our staffing pattern, we anticipate a $355,000 increase. Administrative costs, according to our DESI chart of account classifications, we've been able to reduce about 37,000%, uh, $37,000, excuse me. Instruction, $65,000. Pupil services relatively flat. An increase in operations and maintenance, again, because of our aging buildings and the increase in contracted labor from vendors. Our community services, which is our Bristol Aggie and other district costs, have remained relatively flat. And then our programs with other school districts, which represents our high school tuitions and our special education out of district tuitions, has increased about $350,000. So all in all, to provide a level service budget, the same level of services in fiscal 25 as in fiscal 26, we're looking at a 3.78% increase, or a $17 million budget.
Again, our budget, our baseline budget is $17,013,870. So strategically, we're looking to add a 1.0 full-time equivalent special education teacher and corresponding van to transport these students that aren't otherwise able to ride our yellow bus services. By providing these services in-house, we are actually saving tens of thousands of dollars versus the cost of out-of-district tuitions. So these two asks totaled just over $133,000.
Which ultimately, you take your baseline budget of 17 million, you add these adjustments of 133,000, and you land at the superintendent's recommended budget for fiscal 2026 of $17,146,872. Another way to classify that, and highly fixed costs, again, is this small chart that will be better visible on our website when this is posted. Personnel costs represent about 60% of our budget and have stayed consistently that proportionate throughout the years. Our transportation represents about 8% of our budget. Our, and our high school tuitions and out-of-district tuitions have represented about 21% of our budget. So all in all, we're arguing that 90% of our budget is related to fixed or mandated costs. Another way to view the budget breakdown is by DESI object codes. And again, if you look at, you know, object codes 01, 02, and 03, our salaries represent a great chunk of the budget. Our contracted services have increased about $95,000, and that's still related to fixed costs that we can't provide in the district. We've been able to cut down on our supplies and try to decrease those if not remain flat in the supplies that we need to run our school and our district. And we've also cut back on other expenses. And then a final way to view the budget is by location. So when you break it down between district, special education costs and where they're found, as well as running the elementary school, the middle school, or the high school, you can see the related costs accordingly. And a big chunk of it remains in the special education budget, where costs just increase because of the rate of doing business outside of the district.
Next few slides is our MPASS data, about three years of data. This is ELA. And as you can see, we're meeting or exceeding 12% higher than the state. And I think it's important to know the fact that we do more, we perform better with less money from the state. The next slide shows our map. And again, we're 12% higher than the state. Science, we're 4% higher than the state. And again, this shows the importance that we need to continue to fund our schools. Our data has been consistent over these years, and we're, again, doing more, performing better with less. So here's some other information on demographics that make up our enrollment in the classrooms. I just want to highlight that our per pupil expenditure is approximately $15,000 per student versus the state average of approximately $22,000 per student. So that's significantly different, right?
Oh, well, we outperform the students.
Right. So closing remarks. We built this budget. It was an all-inclusive process, and it took collaboration from our budget subcommittee. I would like to thank you for participating and all of your time that you've dedicated to working on this with our leadership as well as our staff. In the next steps of the budget process, we'll continue collaboration with this committee, the public, and as well as the town administration. We have actually a meeting next week, which is a joint meeting with the finance committee and the board of select committees to review this budget. Every item in this budget is aligned to our strategic objectives as well as our district plan. And the budget maintains level services and looks forward to growth opportunities and efficiencies. So we strongly recommend that people engage in every major of this process. As considerations take place on how to address the needs of a cushion in public schools, it's important that we hear from all stakeholders. And just please keep in mind that each percentage of our budget represents approximately $171,469, which is the equivalent of two to three teachers, two school buses, or chapter 78 for about 26 students. All budget decisions have consequences, and behind every number is a student, a teacher, a program, et cetera. And just because a need goes unfunded does not mean that the need has gone away.
Again, so in closing, we're asking for a 4.59% increase when compared to fiscal 25. If we were limited to a 3% increase, that would have lost $491,000 or a shortfall of $261,000. You can follow the chart up, you know, to a 0% increase. We would ultimately fail level services by $753,000. Right now, the town is going through their departmental budgets. There's been limited guidance on what our allotment is as far as funding is, but we know there's a hardship townwide in that this is a big ask. We're sticking to it because it's important that we provide local services, but we will have that joint budget meeting with the select board and the finance committee next week to look for further guidance and, you know, discuss the budget and why it's important and critical that, you know, we maintain these services in the town cushionet, which, you know, the school system is one of the biggest assets, if not the biggest in town. What will this mean for our budget? If we do need to reduce from this proposal? Well, ultimately, reduction in staffing, changes in programming, potential increase in student fees, or just the elimination of overall activities that we offer, services that we offer. And it would just set us back, because once again, you know, we're doing a lot with the little as it is when compared to the state. And we want to maintain, maintain.
I think, I don't know if anybody has any further questions?
Just a statement. I just want to reiterate to the public out there watching that it's really important for you to support the school budget this year. As we do know, the town is saying that there is a big hardship, but we believe our school is important and is the big reason why people move to our town. So again, if anybody is available at these public meetings that occur, please attend and show your support for this.
And that's kind of the other thing that people are probably thinking like, why are we even hiring a teacher when the budget is tight? Just keep in mind, the displacement of kids is super expensive. So if you can bring those programs in-house, I mean, you probably won't see something right away as far as a savings, but over time, I think we'll see a huge savings of bringing the students back with qualified teachers in the classroom. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, thank you guys so much. We'd like to thank Mrs. Collins and Mr. Halcliff while they work on the subcommittee and just echo the statements of our two committee members here. I think it's really important that we have engagement, you know, to get the budget up. So could I have a motion to close the proposed budget public hearing? We'll resume and open this meeting.
Second.
And we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Head?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Gold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fadera?
Yes.
And Mr. Habron?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is the consent agenda. Everything listed in the consent agenda was distributed in advance of the meeting. Does anyone have any request for something to be removed from the consent agenda and discussed or voted on separately? So may I have a motion to include and separate items listed in the consent agenda, including the minutes for the March 19th, 2025 meeting? All those in favor?
Aye.
To the consent? Say none, our motion passes. Dr. Bailey, do everyone sign up for a certification?
Oh, yes, we do. You don't get away?
Yes.
You sure?
If you guys are going to get away without parents, please. Mr. Chair, school committee members, Dr. Bailey. I'm just here, as the most people know, today is the last official meeting. Mrs. Bailey and Mrs. Golds. So as the union president, on behalf of the ATA, I would like to extend my deepest gratitude to you both. Between the two of you, you've had a combined years, combined years of seventeen years. That's a long time. This needs to overlook the impact you've had on others, but the truth is, your influence is far-reaching. You've made a profound difference in the lives of those around you through your dedication to the students and the staff of cushionet, who have respected us and our jobs, done what's right in difficult times for our students and staff, and never labored in their duties to what's, to do what's best for families in turn doing what's best for staff. The two of you have been difference makers. You both, you're both dedicated people who have needed this impact even with just a small action or a few hours. You have allowed to make that positive change. Thank you for your hard work on capital improvement projects, negotiations, and always putting forth a fair budget that supports students and teachers, and for always listening, and most importantly, for always hearing us. Thank you for all you have done for all of us here in cushionet. You will both be greatly missed. You have left us better than we found us. And for that, we are forever grateful. So it's been a pleasure working with you. I have a little something for both of you on behalf of all the teachers, actually, all the staff in cushionet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can't be nice to ourselves.
Well, thank you so much to the staff and just everyone involved in the past 15 years. It's so scary to say. But yeah, thank you so much again. I'm gonna cry if I didn't do more.
Thank you very much. It's been an honor to be a part of this committee and its very expirations over the last seven, six years. But I do truly believe that these schools are the greatest assets of this town, including the teachers and the administration that drive it, I guarantee. So yeah, please show up for our schools. Yeah, again, it's just been an honor. Thank you.
I think we can have further discussion on the agenda of the school committee. Let's see if we can get them to cry over that. So the next item is old business regarding the superintendent's contract. I think at this time, I'm going to adjust the order of the agenda. We will address the regular agenda items first, then we will move into executive session. Following the executive session, we will reconvene to the regular meeting to discuss and potentially vote on Dr. Bailey's contract. So with that, Dr. Bailey, I'll turn to the committee.
Thank you. So first, this is the best item on the agenda tonight. It's the Open SIDE for middle school. We have many students joining us tonight. And I always enjoy when our students have a big voice in our presentation. So this is something, it's a new program since last year that we've been working on. We have our teachers with us tonight. And Mrs. Sylvia will come up and Ms. Rivera, and they'll introduce the presentation. But this is the science team at the middle school.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the school committee. So we're very excited to present on Open SIDE at the middle school tonight. As you've heard a lot about, our staff and students have been working on implementing this new curriculum. And so we're just so excited to present about it. So the topics tonight that we're going to cover is the Community Day. That was recently. Please go.
No, it's, yeah, we're trying to add to this presentation, so. So Community Day in March, early March, we were asked if our science team would present to a group of 500-plus educators from across Massachusetts. And I am thankful, very appreciative, and we said, yes, we present.
Because we do have model educators and students in this program.
Yes, I was, that's my presentation. We do.
I'm just emphasizing it.
Yes, no, I, I, I talk about it all the time wherever I go. Student Industry Connect was another opportunity that we had to submit student work and some of those students out here, along with the recognition that they received in front of the 500-plus science educators. The students were there, but Mr. Solly are not team. Received the award for you. We're going to have a student panel, and then just review the timeline, just look at the amount of work and time that they have invested in almost two years. It's quite life-changing. So our science team, Mr. Cody in the sixth grade. Mr. Mertz is our academic coach, he was under the leadership of us. Nate Rehal is our STEM teacher. He takes an Open SIDE unit for seventh grade and one for eighth grade. Miss Amanda Grex in our seventh grade, and Mr. Chris Solly are in our eighth grade. They have been working extremely hard. It's a lot of work. This program is not easy to come by, but we had a lot of support from the sub-gives that are in the middle. It's okay. So on March 4th. You, you go ahead. We'll switch out.
So March 4th, our team was asked to present at the Community Day with 500 educators present. And Joe, do you want to talk a little bit about what it was you presented on?
Yeah, so we presented on how we do Open SIDE here at Ford Middle School. We talked a lot about the rituals and routines, the student engagement process. I specifically talked about the use of artifacts and notebooks, which other teachers do. We presented on the way that we do it here, which is pretty similar than most schools, but we've made some adjustments.
Do you want to share about what you spoke about?
Right, so I have a little unique situation right? As you're saying, I teach one unit instead of the full course just because, you know, instead we do some other things. And I focused on my artifact of a digital notebook and kind of admitted that's a working process that I'm working on and working through with the students. But also just wanted to highlight and talk about the ability that we have, and first particularly because we both teach a chemistry unit, that we're able to share. because we both teach a chemistry unit, that we're able to share an artifact that the students make in his class, and then it gets delivered to mine, and I can keep referring back. So that was a nice point that we got to share.
Sorry, but there's a lot of districts that are struggling with getting through the entire curriculum. So this is just an innovative way that this team has come up with, sharing that workload and making sure that all the students are getting all of the curriculum, but just in a unique way. And it allows the science teachers, the core science teachers, to really focus on the depth of the program and not just rushing through it.
So I focused on assessments, and the assessments are very different than what we've done previously. Students aren't memorizing and kind of just repeating information that they take in. They have to really figure out what's going on. Like, I don't just give them, you know, they need to go through things and figure it out. You work as a class to make models. You'll work as a class to do graphs and data tables. And all of that information is up on the walls. So I have word walls. I have models to look at. They have their notebooks where they've done work. And they can use all of those things when they work on their assessment. Because basically, they have to take the knowledge that they've learned and apply it to a new situation, which is a very difficult thing to do. And my concern was that I have students that aren't in my classroom when they click through assessment. So they're, it's not equal. And so I wanted equity for that. And so I started to make a slideshow that they could open on their home books so they could see all the models that were up on the walls, if they weren't in the classroom, or if they were absent and they had to take that assessment at a later date. Maybe they have to go to the office to do it, or to the library. They would still have all of those materials that everybody else had in the classroom.
Hi. And then I spoke about basically organizing the walls in the classroom because there's so many things that we have to do that are student-driven, that are individual to each classroom. And that as the students are coming in, we're supposed to be running around the class and changing the posters from one place to another. And last year was very difficult to do. There was one day that the students walked in and they must have had twenty posters that just fell on the ground and we'd standing in the middle of the classroom, just don't find it. So we found that, or I found that magnets on the whiteboards worked really well. Last year, I actually got them some of those night, magnetic night holders. And so I can put posters on those and be able to easily take them off and move them around. Christine and I also kind of opened up our presentation as we introduced ourselves. And one of the important things to realize about this science group is that between the four of us, we have about a hundred years of experience in the classroom. And even with that, last year was like the first year teaching again. So it was a completely new way of presenting the material. It was a new way of teaching the kids and actually having them have a larger voice in our classroom. And so our experience helped us in that aspect. But it was really first-year teacher almost again. And once you're a twenty-year teacher, you don't want to be a first-year teacher. But it was a, it was a really, I wouldn't say fun experience, but it was a really eye-opening experience to kind of rejuvenate all of our, all of us who were teaching.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Sollya just hit it right on the nose. And after twenty years, you don't want to make a change. But our team made that change. They saw this program as exciting, innovative, and for our students, and there's nothing else. You know, we meet with a lot of professionals across the state, across the country, and they're, they are amazed that we can pull together in a year and a half and do what other schools are not doing yet. So I am very thankful for that.
So it's not typical for a school district to adopt the curriculum in its entirety in the course of one year. It's, a lot of districts are doing it over the course of three. So we've said this before, but it was a really big ask. And I think that they probably, the teachers I'm sure would agree, that they've had a lot of support from the administration and the academic coach in order to make this happen. So our academic coach, Christine, who unfortunately is not able to be here tonight, Christine Nemers, she did also present within that Community Day to talk about what is the role of the coach in helping with this implementation. And I believe one of the pictures on here, you can see in the bottom-left corner, she's kind of showing how she made those boxes with all of the, like, everything kind of that the teachers would need, help them kind of laminate what needed to get laminated, print what needed to get printed. They, if the teachers had a release day, say the students were taking an assessment, Mrs. Sylvia would release the teacher so that she would get coverage for the students to have somebody else in the room. And the teachers would have the day to really look at the upcoming unit, some time with the coach to help plan for what's coming up. And that was a model that worked for us. It was a lot, it was a lot, but it, it worked. And we're getting a lot of recognition from the 1-8 people and the Open Sci Ed community for the way that we have implemented this program. So it's exciting.
I'll share with you all, last week I did say we should be a model school. So people from Colorado and Los Angeles should come over here to our school and see what we're doing because it is, it is, we're not here, we're at the same level. It's other schools are kind of the same. Okay, so Student Industry Connect. This was an opportunity.
So I want to say earlier this year.
Yeah, open up your own board. Yeah.
I received an email from Open Sci Ed and the 1-8 Foundation. And they were looking for student work to be submitted for industry connections. And it just happened that we had finished a unit. They had done their transfer task. So the way that that Open Sci Ed assesses them is that instead of, so we spent the whole time learning about McKenna, McKenna's medical issues, and we diagnosed McKenna and come up with ways to treat her and the reasons why she's feeling the way she's feeling. But the test at the end of that is about why Bear's put on so much weight to go into hibernation. And so that's what they call the transfer task, is taking the knowledge and putting it towards something else and not just kind of regurgitating the old, the information. So we got this email and we had just finished that assessment. And that was one of the projects that they were selecting this year to go into the people that work within the industry. So I was able to pick ten students to send their work in. I would say about two months later, three months later, we received that feedback. But before we did, we had that day in March, and they were, the person who was speaking on the stage was saying something like, we have somebody in the audience that has an award for the Industry Connect, and it was about the hibernation of bears. And I had no, I really didn't think that it would have been us, that we would have had a chance at doing this. And then they called my name to go up and get the award. So I was very, very surprised. And then when I started to see the feedback, and it's nothing that I did, it's all the work that, that these students did. They, I didn't know about this opportunity beforehand, so I couldn't even coach them if I wanted to on the assessment. They wrote down what they learned in class on that assessment. And I picked the ones that I thought had the most interesting models and had answered the questions in different ways. They didn't all answer the same exact way. So we sent it out to, we got the feedback in. They were able to see their feedback a couple of weeks ago. This is a couple of things that were said. And the best part about it was that these are people who are currently working in the fields that we were studying. So a lot of them were medical researchers, and they mentioned several times that the work that these students did was the same work that they do every single day when they go into a job. And so this program, because of the way that it's set up, we're not only teaching them about the science and them learning about the science, but we're teaching them how the industry works and how to be a good scientist. And it all has to do with teamwork and communication and being able to let people know what you know in a way that they can understand it. So it was a great job done by these students. We have five of them here tonight. The other five couldn't make it tonight, but that's okay, with their names are on the, so. So this is the banner that they sent us. They sent us, they gave me two certificates and another banner that was in the, that's in my classroom right now. So they just keep on sending us. And I can't wait to see if something shows up next month, too. So, and I think it's a great job that these students did. They really did earn this, this recognition, and I can't wait to see what they do in the future with all of this information.
Yes, thank you.
We were with the 1-8 Foundation last week, and they were still actually talking about your work and how unbelievable it was.
Yes, they said we have another surprise in May. I think I let you all know that. I said, well, wait till May, she said. Well, so I'm excited to see what's happening in May.
So we wanted to have an opportunity for the community to hear from the students, their thoughts about how science is going at the middle school. So we have our student panel here, and they're gonna, I'm gonna pose a question, and they'll raise their hands, and Mrs. Sylvia will kind of select. And we talked about earlier today that you may all have something to say about every question, but there's a lot of questions. So we'll select one or two, and then we'll just keep moving, and everybody will have an opportunity to share, okay? All right. So the first question is, what is one word that describes an open sci, an Open Sci Ed science class?
Healing?
Come on up. You gotta come on up, otherwise they won't hear you.
Involved.
Thank you.
Lucas?
Logan, sorry.
Engaged.
Miles?
Educational.
Hudson.
Anyone else? Okay, so this is just a show of hands. If you hold your hands up high, because there's people sitting behind you. On a scale of zero to five, zero being silence and five being chaos, give us a show of hands what it feels like to you in science class. Okay, so we have a little bit of everything here, but like some twos, some threes, some fours, no silence, right? So we're kind of like in the middle. Thankfully, I don't think we saw any chaos either, so that's good. So does anybody want to share why they gave the rating that they gave? Go ahead, Hudson.
It kind of depends on the day. Like, some days we'll do a science circle where we discuss like the information that we learn in class. And that can get really chaotic when people have different opinions about stuff. And then some days, it's really like mellow where we're just like gaining information about things every night.
Acadian? Um, sometimes it's, like, a lot of people are talking at once, but after a while, it calms down and it, like, starts chilling and you start listening to Mr. Cody more. Sometimes lots of people are just talking over him and you can't hear him, and then he raises his hand, and then we all listen to what he's saying.
Thank you. Do you suppose?
Okay, so now, on a scale of zero to five, zero to five with your hands up high, so a classroom, a science classroom of being like silent, doing work on your own, independent work, or with your desks in rows, right? Or a five being that you're kind of working in groups. Give us a show of hands what it feels like to you in science class. And then if anyone wants to share why they gave that rating, please do.
I gave a four because sometimes I get, we do some independent work sometimes, like in our notebooks. But most of the time, we're either talking to our partner or Mr. Cody brings us in groups. So it's pretty fun that we get to actually work with other people.
Katie?
Um, I've been in all the science classrooms, and there's never been a time where we're telling off words with people only for sessions, and each science room is groups of four, and there's nothing to say by themselves. In our science classes, we always work together. There's never a moment where we're not allowed to share like what ideas are with our group. And we only really have to be silent when we're teaching subjects, but even then, we're allowed to use our notebooks, allowed to use our information. And a lot of the time, we have ideas that we collaborate on, and it's really interactive with our classmates.
So I'm going to phrase this question in a way. So tell us about a time in science class when things maybe didn't go quite how your teacher might have planned. And we're going to keep this around the idea of like science education, okay? The experiment, but the learning, right?
That's a different topic.
So in our class, Mr. Sollya told us that where we're at right now, he didn't even get to last year with the kids in eighth grade. And I feel like it just makes us feel like, really like we're there because like the students last year couldn't even like get to that point. We're learning with him. He hasn't done this part yet because of the new, like, Open Sci Ed program. So we're kind of just like learning together.
During our bathroom, we had to do a test of the bathrooms. And there was moments in our classroom where we all got different results, and we had to figure out why this was. And our teachers helped us like walk through what happened, why this might have been different from the other classes, why we might have gotten different results, and helped us understand what we were looking at.
Most of the time, the teacher has it under control, but there's one time where the schedule changes. We made it so that the experiment that we were doing didn't go to plan because it was different times when it was supposed to be twenty-four hours, and it didn't last no longer.
What did you do?
So we looked at the other students' data that was like earlier in the day, so it had more time to settle. So we had that data, except we didn't.
Some experiments didn't go to plan, so usually we're just kind of looking at different other experiments I might look at. Or maybe experiments we did, we had another adolescent that went to bed with us at snack. And so we did different experiments that helped with our understanding for our lessons.
Okay, so we, we touched on this a little bit, but like what happened the next day? So how did you move on? So this is a learning experience, not only for students, but for the teachers, right? So if you have a class in the seventh, last period of the day, and then that same class meets again the first period the next day, right? With something needed to sit for twenty-four hours, it didn't quite get the twenty-four hours. And those are just like little things that come up, and the teachers have to just think on their feet all the time, especially first year, second year, and then, you know. But was there anything that happened the next day that helped you to move on in any of your situations that you got stuck? Okay, all right. So, so a big part of Open Sci Ed is that they have science circles, right? And they sit in circles and they're sharing their thinking. So are there ever times when your class discussions where there's really nobody talking? And why do you think that is?
Yes. I mean, like, in the beginning, like, there's usually nobody really raising their hand or trying to talk because either they don't really understand what's happening, or they're just like very shy and they don't want to like share their opinion. But after people start like asking questions, and then another person answers it, and then they start going more into topics that they do understand. and then they start going like more into topics that they do understand, then and people start getting into the discussion.
So after what Akiania said, uh, I agree with her because like there's definitely some people that are scared to be wrong. And I think that's okay if you're wrong because that's a great way to learn past that. So personally, I think that people should like get comfortable with sharing. Like maybe like, like bigger groups sometimes can help with that by like maybe just book a class in like three so like we can have mini groups. So that can help with like, you know, getting over that fear.
You're hired.
Yes, because um, some people are scared of being wrong. So once one kid like stands up and answers the question, they all feel confident and with their answer and then it starts to pick up before it, before everyone understands.
Can you tell us about the ones that are good?
We have a list of classroom norms. Uh, there's respectful and I can't remember off the top of my head what the other ones were. But it goes into explanation on how we should be respectful towards other students during classroom discussions and how we should listen with respect.
My third is a number of words. Or even in the last one.
Um, we have classroom norms that help us like really stay on topic with what we're talking about. So like one of them is moving our science became born. And it's really to help us like guide us to not get off topic and start talking about something completely different. But for a classroom of, I love how we want this to be active and just be nice for all classes. But ensure that ideas only criticize the ideas, not the people who are giving them. And I feel like that helps our conversations and helps people be able to speak clearly in the classroom without being worried about their answers falling or it's not gonna be received well.
Hudson?
Another one is being committed to the community. Community means not one person sharing answers. And everybody should be able to share as much as they know what their opinion is coming along on the process. And if they show that like they're paying attention, they care about what they're learning about.
Um, so this question was about building trust and teamwork in the classroom and I think we just addressed that. Are we good with that? Um, so what is one thing that you would like all of the adults in the room to know about how students learn science?
Um, using Open Saiyan, we're told to like question about everything we're doing. And those questions then help us learn. And by the end of the topic, we're able to answer all the questions from the class.
Thank you. Hudson after, yeah, Hudson and then Montana, you did it.
So whenever we walk into the classroom, it's always like, so there's always a question on the board for us to answer. And whenever just like walking in and like putting our stuff down and waiting for the teacher to start, we always start engaging like with our, um, group members about a question on the board. And then we start to answer it, um, right after the teacher has started the class and then get into the topic.
In our classroom, we're almost always gonna make, you know, like we make experiments. We're not field research, never just we get statistics and foreign information. We're actually seeing how things work in real time and answering our own questions with our observations. And even if the teacher asks, like we guide us, we're pretty much a student-led classroom.
Any questions?
I don't think it takes like a lot of kids to say, but they need very many more lessons. But it's a very hand-on experience of being taught or talking about the lesson. Not many kids get off that. They really are put together and the teachers know what the lesson is of your lesson. So like teach the class and like talk, um, if you're about what's going on.
Uh, so I know some people, uh, are different in learning about different things. So uh, sometimes science is difficult to learn when someone's just saying it. Sometimes you need models to understand what like, like you, some people are physical learners, like they need to like see it and then they understand it. Some people are different. They're like very easy learners. Like they can just hear someone say it and then they'll understand it. So I just think the adults in the room should know that different, like people have different understandings of different topics.
He's definitely going into teaching.
So I thank all of you, I do from the bottom of my heart, the teachers, the students. I thank you all for going through this process and we will continue. We still have more PD. This timeline, it goes on and on and on. Yes. The font is very tiny. Um, it shows the timeline from the beginning of when we applied for the GRIT, when we got the GRIT, when we went to the Grand Convene, PD after PD, Community Day, Community Day. We have PD this summer. Uh, we are continuing. We are continuing the Open Saiyan Project. And actually any, you know, curriculum the 1-8 wants to, wrong way? We will dig into it, yes. Questions? Yes.
How did you get this program into our town? How did it come to fruition?
Yeah, very kind. Um, we applied for the GRIT. The GRIT came across our desk and was a factor to this. We had to get the buy-in from the teachers first. Um, we were struggling with what we were using before. It was not, he was a friend at all in the COVID years. Um, so we all knew we needed to change. And then this change brought with us the professionals in the community with the PD. I mean, three days, five days PD or mail, morning, noon and dinner. Accommodations overnight, they pay for our teachers, so there's no traveling back and forth. Um, so we applied for it and we received it.
So we got this, you know, expense to the budget?
There's no money in our budget for this. This is free open source curriculum. It's high quality. And I have to say that our administrators, our academic coach, they've been involved from step one, right alongside the teachers with this. Um, as you know, I meet one-to-one with all of the staff here in preparation for listening, for input and feedback and insight for our strategic plan next year. And I will say I've met with all of the science teachers, um, everyone actually. And I hear the joy and the passion from every single one of them. And I know Mr. Sonya mentioned he felt like a first-year teacher and I say this super respectfully. His excitement and passion today, when I met with you, it comes right through. And the kids feel it. And when I listen to the students speak about science, they're talking about it. They're way more excited than they were when I first walked in this district. Um, it's just a phenomenal program and I, I appreciate every single person who's had their hands on this, including our students. And students, stop by my office tomorrow. I have something for you because I am so, so proud of each and every one of you. So stop by for a little trinket for me.
Any other questions?
Just, just one more. For your eighth graders, they did not have this program in fifth and sixth grade. Is that correct? So I'd love to hear from at least one student. What are your thoughts versus remember fifth and sixth grade to now? Is it better? Is it worse?
Um, now it's definitely better and I was never really a science person. I was more of an engineer. But this year especially, I've been like leaning more towards science. It was more fun and engaging. Uh, in fifth and sixth, we were just on computers all the time. Not really like talking a lot about it, but it's definitely better.
Yeah, just a comment. I mean, I'm a teacher 20 years and have head curriculum on my desk so many times, right? Without any of that. So the PD is so important. I think you have the buy-in from your teachers for your support and all of that PD makes it so important. Um, so thank you for having their back.
Yes, no, you're welcome. I'm always gathering up little trinkets and little notes. And one thing the four of them did was they trusted the process.
That's hard to do.
But they did?
Mm-hmm, I know.
And they had an open mind. It's not easy teaching, being a seasoned teacher and being, you know, so open about trying something new, right? But they had an open mind about it and they came together and they worked together with the administrators, with the coach and each other to figure this out. And I will tell you, there's many districts right now upset that they cannot get into the way of the foundation the way we have. Um, I'm hearing from other superintendents, how do you get in? Uh, people want in and they're not able to get in. And the 1-8 Foundation has been highly complimentary to our district and it's because of the people in this room. All of them, um, who really has made this happen. This is why we're here. That's why I told you, this is the most important thing on our agenda tonight. This is why we do what we do each and every day. This is the important things, right? So thank you very, very much.
No, thank you all.
Yeah, absolutely. So next, yeah, that's great. Next we have, um, School Choice and, you know, I do have a little bit of a little proposal, um, for the information.
Have that been said? Can I have a motion to call the superintendent's recommendation against the cushion of participation in School Choice?
Aye.
Next, I'd like to call Jerry back to the podium. Uh, we want to give you a little progress update on Student Opportunity Act progress report. So come on back up to the podium, Jerry. So, um, the Student Opportunity Act, you gave a call last year, the school committee voted on this, our plan for the Student Opportunity Act, which is a three-year plan, FY '25 to FY '27. Um, and so this is the time of year, every year, where we need to be providing a progress report to the stage about how we're making gains hopefully on our goal of seventy head staff. Um, and the Student Opportunity Act is basically, um, an increase that hap- an increase in chapter 78 that happened in 2019. Um, and the idea is that we're closing opportunity gaps and so that we're setting targets um, and helping to, um, have, you know, achievement for all students. So we based our plan half of the 2023 NCAS for the students, some of students who were meeting or exceeding expectations. Um, and what we found was that the group that had the greatest disparity compared to all students as far as, um, co-op and achievement were students with disabilities. And also, um, all students were kind of like coming in there second. So we wanted to mainly focus on, on these groups. And so we decided to take a close look at our approach to early literacy. And we, our focus areas are implementing, um, a comprehensive early literacy plan using high-quality curricular materials that really have a strong focus on foundational skills, using reliable literacy screeners so that we can identify students and give them research-based interventions. And then, um, the, the academic interventions. Um, so we've funded through this, uh, the purchase of our Lexia Core 5. And on the side there, that's a, a three-year investment, the cost for three years. Um, our Renaissance Star Early Literacy and Star Reading. So we look at DIBELS a lot, but we also look at the STAR reading assessments. And then we are also funding three interventionists and a reading specialist through SOA. And, um, what we've been working on since we wrote these, since we wrote this plan last year, um, we do have a dyslexia protocol established. It's a work in progress, but we've done a large amount of that work. We had a dyslexia team that worked on quite a bit, actually, last summer. Um, we're developing intervention resource libraries. We had ongoing professional development for the academic coach and interventionists. We are utilizing the Lexia Core 5. Um, we have reading interventionists and reading specialists in place. And we're screening with DIBELS, we're screening with the STAR reading. We are continuing to use high-quality materials for instruction. And there's weekly meetings at the elementary school where they look at different things like data review and planning and professional development. Um, and so this is the data that we use. The state will of course be looking at our NCAS data. We don't have that available quite yet. So what we're looking at here is our DIBELS reading assessment. Um, and we're looking at the, and we're kind of also looking at the students with disabilities. So BOI is the beginning of the year. So this is the number of students who were, um, at or above benchmark coming into the school year. And then the MOI means middle of the year. Um, so we've had growth, um, we're showing growth. Um, and we have, we've, we've made some gains with the students with disabilities at varying levels throughout the grade levels. Uh, but this information is important for us because as we get that middle-of-the-year data, we can start looking at where are we putting our resources? Um, who are we focusing on? Where do we need to make some adjustments? And so all of those things are happening. And this ties to the district's strategic objective. I won't read all of that, but these are our indicators for achieving academic excellence for all students. Questions? Thank you. So, and so our budget transfers, as you can report, we even have to present to the school committee any budget transfers. We do not have any, um, so there's no votes needed tonight. Declaration of surplus. Um, as you can see from the attachment, our cafeteria, um, we've been involved in purchasing new equipment. So we do want to declare that list in front of you as surplus, which we have to do according to our policies. So that's what you see in front of you. Um, and we really need to vote for that, to accept that as surplus.
Any questions? Can I have a motion to, to declare the listed items as surplus and allow the business manager to determine how to activate its method of disposal for the school committee policy? So who?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, before I close my report tonight, I'm just gonna have Ronnie and you could get the little gifts for our guest, our honored guest tonight. So I want to just take a moment to express my sincere gratitude to Jennifer Downing and Sarah Gomes on the committee for their dedicated service to our schools as well as our community. Your commitment to our students, our families and our staff has made a lasting impact. Through every challenge and every triumph, you've led with integrity, compassion and a deep belief in the power of public education. It's been an absolute honor to work alongside you. And I sincerely appreciate your support all, all the years that I've been here. So on behalf of our district, thank you both for your leadership, your time and your unwavering support. We wish you all the best in what comes next and you will always, always be a part of our school community. You crying?
Just a few comments from, uh, one of the most noble endeavors for people is to serve their community. And you two have served this community well. And you have preconsequential rewards. The presentation we had The presentation we had recently, you know, because, you know, sort of, was part of your previous, this is what you spent all the time coming to meetings, serving on committees, deliberating, voting votes, has led, led to. You made it work. You saw the fruits of your labor working. And that, and that, and it, take that with you. Take that moment that we've shared with you forever, really. You know, I've worked on, from, on my lifetime, I've worked on all three levels of government, federal, state, and local. And I find that working for local, local is far more demanding and taking a great deal more expertise than as you go up, so to speak, up, up the ladder, where it's more segmented in your discipline. Your disciplines have been varied, has been, you have, you have to be, know everything, collective bargaining issues, to all those issues that we need to deal with. So I just, I want to commit you to, I know I, I probably tested your patience sometime.
No. No. You're the reason why I'm here.
Right. But, uh, you know, I, I, it's how much, uh, we, the community, I would speak, you know, appreciate, appreciate all your, your, your time. I, I hope, no, I hope not going away. Mrs. Bowens, uh, at the beginning of the meeting threatened me by saying that she's not going away, that she's going to be active. And I really, I really approved.
Honest.
I really, you know, I said, I said, you're welcome for that. And I, and I think we all, so, and I'd say with you, Mrs. Downing, don't go away. Community needs you more than ever. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
No, just, um, thanks for being here, guys, because moving here seven years ago, I think I wanted to have that PTO, but I'm like, here I am. So thank you for being, um, you guys guiding me.
Yeah, I would echo that. I thank you to both, and you're, um, seventeen combined. So I don't know if people realize, you know, there's a monthly meeting, but in between those monthly meetings, the amount of time and effort that goes into all of the subcommittee meetings, all of the outreach to the various stakeholders and town teams, I think, and a lot of dedication, so you guys have made a huge shift. And I've learned a lot from you.
And I, again, I'm just, uh, very honored to have served. I've learned so much doing this, um, service. Thank you.
And I, again, I'm, I'm, I would just, um, let anybody know that's, that's watching this that if you feel like you can make a difference in your community, then do that. Join, get involved, make noise, um, and just stay true to what you believe in. And you can make a change because, you know, I'm like one of the only ones besides John that's really seen what we've done in the past. It's been 15 years since I've been involved in this, and ten with the school committee. And, um, it's leaps and bounds.
It's changed a lot, yeah.
It has changed a lot, in, in a good way. And I hope the trajectory just stays, even though Jen and I are no longer involved here in the school committee. You know, we hope the future people in here, you know, see, um, how wonderful this district is and how special it is, um, and just move it into the, you know, the next coming years to a, a better school, right? Keep your standards high, that's all I have to say.
Well, we're better, our district is better for because of the two of you as well as the entire committee. But I do, um, echo what Mr. Hood said. It's not just the monthly meetings. None of you get a paycheck for this. It's all of the meetings in between. And I know, like, this, we, we get three late nights, many of you, right? So I appreciate that. You all have families that you're giving up time and sacrificing, but you've been a great support to the administration, the district, our teachers, and our students. And we are better because of you. So thank you. Thank you for your support. That's all I have for tonight.
So we're gonna follow that, probably, uh, presentation up and update from the two patrons. Go ahead. No pressure.
No pressure.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, school committee members. It's M-CAS time, and I've heard that a lot from me and everybody else. Uh, I'm proud of it. I've spent the second day of our full M-CAS, and we've done a fantastic job. Our students, our staff, the principals, they've done pre-testing, testing, you name it, and it's gone swimmingly. Um, and that is with the new platform that has had so many challenges. So I, I, my hat is off. Kudos to the entire team. Fantastic job. Uh, we have a security update, um, a few months ago, and I didn't get to speak about this, but we've been rolling out SSO, our single sign-on, to, uh, increase our security in the district and make it easier for our staff and students. We're gonna continue that moving forward with any application that we can. You would think most platforms would offer that service as a free thing, but some platforms charge you for that, just to make their platform more secure. So of course, those things will have to be put to the back until we find the capital for it. But for the ones that we can do, we're moving ahead of those. Uh, and, and all, you've seen in your document what we have to report. Uh, behind the scenes, we're still doing this with everything, but we're trying to automate and make more efficiencies, uh, make things more efficient. Um, for instance, I could do one right now. I'm working with, and thank you to one of us. We're working on an email that goes out to our new employees automatically with everything that they need to start working here, um, and kind of, uh, have a good foot forward, uh, working for a cushion. Um, and those are things that we're doing in the tech department. You guys have any questions? Want me to link it all?
Chairperson, chairperson of the little school committee. Um, business managers report as normal, uh, starting with the fiscal '25 budget. Um, ironically enough, we have a quarter of the school, uh, year left, and there's 25% of our budget remaining. Um, it's not coincidence. It's just the fiscal management, um, that doesn't start with me, but with the leadership team as a whole. Everybody manages their departmental budget. Um, we stay on track with that budget as planned, as much as possible. Um, and it does also speak to a little bit of the fact that our budget is mainly fixed costs. So there isn't a lot of variability in winter room, unless we have move-ins, moves, move-outs, new services, and, and we, you know, pivot accordingly. But, um, really, with one quarter left and 25% of the budget left, it's a testament of just our, our management of, of the district. The fourth quarter is the hardest, uh, you know, expenses fall in for the remainder of the year. If there are changes, there's not as much funding to move around to, again, pivot on. Um, and then we try to analyze our savings to see, you know, what can we afford, um, at the end of the year? What we're gonna return back to the town? What we're going to fund stabilization funds with or pay prepaid tuitions for? Um, so we're kind of in the home stretch of closing out the year, but it's also the hardest part as we balance all these other initiatives. Um, and, and again, those sentiments allude to why there's no budget transfers. Again, as we talked about earlier, it's just, we're on, we're on budget, we're on pace, we're on track. Um, and we do a good job with that. And doesn't have budget, no budget process, and follow up in the budget. Um, facilities, ah, let's see here, um, just an update on the new facilities director. You haven't been fortunate enough to meet him yet, but, um, he's been here, he's been working hard. Um, just, I want to highlight the fact that, that the facilities and custodial team has had a new approach to tackle things in-house and fix things themselves and gather the tools to fixing themselves, rather than push everything out to a contract with expense or to a vendor. Um, so with this method, there's a lot that we're trying to do on our own and do it the right way, but we're also soliciting a lot of quotes, um, for things that we know we can't do, for bigger projects that are on the horizon. And we're trying to put those things together to sort of build a capital plan that's long overdue, um, just for the school buildings. That started with the investment grade audit, but now we're sort of extending it, um, to anything we can get our hands on, get vendors in the know to get quotes on, uh, which is very important, um, because then that allows us to say, hey, is this easier for us to pay for, more equitable to pay for? Or can we do this ourselves with the right tools? And then what can't we do operationally in-house or external that we need to plan for a capital ask? Um, so that's important to have that vision. Um, and if we've, we've been off on the right step with the facilities director, um, in taking that approach. And, uh, I, I look forward to the bright future that's ahead of him, um, and our facilities because of him and the team. Food service, so we talked about surplusing some items earlier. Um, this is, again, in plan with replacing some of the obsolete equipment. The items that were being surplus are 23-plus years old and pretty much, they're worth salvage value at this point. Um, so the four items that were on the top of the list are being replaced by two commie ovens. Um, so, you know, we're gonna consolidate the equipment, it's gonna be more efficient, and we're gonna have more opportunity to, uh, change the processes within the kitchen, whether that means real prep, or reheat, or, um, new menu items. It just allows us to be more creative and slowly build out that process. So I know the team's excited about that. Those items are gonna be installed over April vacation. Our team will be trained on those items. Um, and, and again, it's a step in the right direction to kind of offer change through the kitchen, uh, which I know they're looking forward to. And then some of the other items have just been kind of taking up space, collecting dust. Um, they haven't been working in quite some time, and it's just time to dispose them and start cleaning out our kitchen. So, um, those are being surplus now. They'll be posted for 10 days, um, available to anybody that wants them, and then after that, we dispose of them, um, properly. Uh, usually, when a vendor replaces your equipment, they'll take it off your hands for free. Um, and then we don't have to worry about costs for getting that out of the district. In addition, we still remain a community eligibility provision district, which means free lunch and breakfast throughout, uh, both kitchens, both schools. Um, and that's due to our low income percentage. We have to report on that every year, so we've been working on those April reports, as they call them, um, and are ready to submit. And we look forward to, um, as far as we know, uh, providing free lunch and breakfast for, uh, the foreseeable future unless something on the federal or state level changes. But so far, nothing on that matter yet. Transportation, registration, so our favorite topic in the world, and we look forward to it most, is open registration and hoping that everyone registers on time so that we can plan our buses, our routes, our stops accordingly to the next fiscal year. Um, it feels early, but ultimately, there's a lot of data that comes in on this with address changes, stop changes, new riders, you know, people that want private transportation. So it's critical that when we do release the registration, that people register timely inaccurately so we can plan accordingly. Um, as we've alluded to over the past meetings and budget presentations, there's a big cost associated with transportation, so it's important, again, that we're saving seats for those that need it and not placeholder otherwise. Um, because ultimately, if we have accurate data and can cut down on a bus or need to add a bus, we need to be able to plan for that. So we need to have that information now so that over the summer, we can plan those routes, plan those expenses, see what needs to change. Um, so be on the lookout for that. We'll be sending out mailings, uh, with our students coming home. We're posting on our website, on social media, and we just ask for timely cooperation with that. Um, and then other matters, our second public hearing, um, regarding the ABS project, environmental project, um, and potential debt exclusion, is going to be posted April 16th at 6:00 PM in the Albert Ford Middle School Cafeteria. Um, this is a joint public hearing with the select board. Um, you may have seen our presentation previously. We, we, we'll recycle that presentation, um, so that we can inform the public on the project, um, and the impact that it may have on the taxpayers. And then in addition to that, we are working to put out a fact sheet with the town clerk, um, to send out prior to the ballot vote. Uh, so that's important, again, to just make sure, you know, we, we realize that not everyone tunes in, watches every meeting, reads every newsletter. The information has been there, um, but these are opportunities for us to just isolate them and focus strictly on the project and the debt exclusion, um, and the facts surrounding them. So these are critical meetings for us as we move forward to a ballot question and a town vote. Um, and then, you know, I don't have any words prepared for our two school committee members that are departing, but, um, it, it's been a pleasure. It feels like it's been more than two and a half years with you guys. Um, I've learned a lot from you. I appreciate your patience with me. I hope I've been able to teach you some things as well. Um, but, you know, you, you think of these meetings, and I, I kind of laugh with Superintendent Bailey about all the committees and this and that, and that I get dragged into. But not only feel like a chore, because, you know, all of the meetings are of substance. You guys bring great perspectives and opinions and, and conversation to all of those meetings that it, it's not like, oh, no, another subcommittee meeting, oh, no, another school committee. They're enjoyable to come to. Um, I've watched a lot of meetings in other school districts, and the engagement in school committees vary. Um, and honestly, it's been a, it's been a pleasure, and, you know, it's, it's made it enjoyable working with the two of you and, you know, the expertise and information that you've been able to share, um, and the patience and trust you've put in myself and the rest of the district. So thank you. Uh, we will be missed. That's all. Any questions? Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Do you have any, uh, school committee member report?
I have no more PTO reports. Somebody else is gonna talk and take over, but, uh, I'm gonna be showing up in the back.
So we, we also, any comments or questions on any of the communication materials, district newsletter, personnel report? Okay, so we're gonna, uh, move to executive session. Could I have a, a motion to adjourn to executive session to pursue Massachusetts chapter 11, Chapter 38, Section 21, A2 and 3? And reconvene in open session, to conduct such sessions and preparation for negotiations with municipal personnel, or to conduct contract negotiations with non-municipal personnel to their community, and to reconvene in open session for the purpose of voting on the superintendent's contract, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or goodwill position of the public body in the chair so that there's room for negotiation. Say that fast.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowens?
Yes.
Mrs. Corgera?
Yes.
And Mrs. Harper?
Turning from, uh, executive session, as we mentioned during the meeting, we would, um, go to executive session for the possibility on voting on the superintendent's contract. So could I have a motion, um, and I, uh, to, to approve a new six-year contract for Dr. Bailey effective July 1st, 2026, and it runs through June 30th, 2032? And we'll do roll call?
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowens?
Yes.
And Mrs. Corgera?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, and could I have a motion to close tonight's, uh, meeting?
So, uh, tell me.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowens?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
And Mrs. Corgera?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.